Evening, it's 5:03 and the regular session of the Planning Commission of the City of Lancaster will please come to order. If you'd all stand, Vice Chair Hall will lead us in the invocation and I will lead us in the pledge.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Thank you, God, for allowing us to meet like this. I ask that you give health to those that need healing, make their recoveries quick. We ask for prayers for Jane Frye and her family, that you limit her suffering as much as you can. Protect our leadership as they attempt to create peace in the world, in Korea would be one place. Help us in this commission in making decisions that will make this a better community. Thank you for staff that prepares us for these meetings. Thank you for the military that have served and those that have served. Protect them and their families as they are deployed. Thank you for our first responders. Make their jobs as safe as you can. I pray in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you. If you'd all please join me in the renewal of the pledge to our flag. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Harvey.
Present.
Vice Chair Hall.
Here.
Chairman Vos.
Here.
Commissioner Mercy.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Ms. Cook is absent tonight. She injured herself recently, fractured her ankle, and so we wish her well and a speedy And hopefully she has something better to do than watch this meeting on TV tonight.
I guarantee she's watching it.
Think she might be.
I betcha, yeah.
Hi Diana.
Shall we all wave?
She's reading.
Public business from the floor. Any person who would like to address the commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item that you'd like to address the commission on. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the commission at the time the item is called. Speaker cards are available through the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. However, applicants and their representatives are given adequate time to give their presentation, and after that happens, then individual speakers who have filled out a speaker's card may address the commission, and then applicant or their representative would have an opportunity to rebut if they chose. Our process is, we meet twice a month. Typically, we meet the week prior to this meeting, in this room, in an open session. However, we do not deliberate. We are briefed by staff on the proposed agenda, and we receive that input from those members of the staff relative to the proposed agenda. So, if, when an item comes up, you might be surprised and think, well gee, they didn't talk about anything, why, you know, kind of odd, isn't it? Well, it may be odd to you, but to us, if we've heard the staff report previously and have no further questions of staff or no concern, then we move right through the agenda.
Not to interrupt, but Diana Cook said hi, everyone.
Oh, she did. Our colleagues are very dedicated to this commission and to the city, and find it very challenging when they're unable to attend. Unless you're on vacation, then it really doesn't matter at all. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of May 14, 2018. May I have a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote.
Motion carries with one abstention.
All right, thank you.
I attempted to review the meeting and the link to the video didn't go up until, and I was unable to view it. It has since been fixed.
Thank you. All right. Next item is a new business item, item number two. But before I call that, let me just read into the record a number of items we received We received a modification, what we call a modification list, which staff prepares prior, or after the agenda's been published, but prior to the meeting, if there's any errors or new information that we would expect to receive. On item 3A, we received information on, condition number 13 was revised on 3B, condition number four, number five were removed. And item 3C, the resolution on pages one and two was amended. On item five, the conditional use permit resolution on one pa, page one was amended, and condition number 40 was added on page six. Item number six, this item will be continued to the July meeting, and a revised staff report will be provided prior to that meeting. We've also received pieces of correspondence from various folks. We've received correspondence on item 3A, 3B, 3C, item five, and item seven. That's all the housekeeping. All right. So, we'll move to new business item number two, alcohol-related planning commission approval. This is a report that the commission asked for recently, and is it Ms. Swain who will be telling us about that?
Correct. Good evening Chairman Vos, members of the commission. The City of Lancaster requires a conditional use permit for alcohol-related uses under section 1742 of the municipal code. This section of the code has been in effect since 2008 and was most recently amended on December 13, 2016. The planning commission has heard 87 alcohol-related cases since the adoption of the ordinance. Forty-four of these cases have involved the sale of alcohol at restaurants. Per section 174240 of the municipal code, bona fide restaurants do not have a separation distance requirement. The planning commission has approved all restaurant-related alcohol cases that have come before it. The remaining 43 cases can be broken down into several general categories and license types, which were provided to you in tables one and two of the staff report. A total of 17 of these cases needed a waiver from the distance requirements associated with neighboring residential uses, schools, or other alcohol establishments excluding restaurants. These included nine mini mart gas stations, the VFW, Industry Theater, Bravery Brewing, My Lounge, Ben's Corner, Complexity Wine, El Tiere nightclub, and the Spring Hill Suites. Ten of the cases with a waiver request were approved by the planning commission. The seven remaining cases with waiver requests were initially denied by the planning commission. These cases involved six mini mart gas stations and Ben's Corner. Of these cases, six were appealed to the city council, which ultimately resulted in five mini mart gas station cases being approved and the denial of Ben's Corner being upheld. Two additional cases which did not have waiver requirements were denied by the planning commission. These cases were appealed by the applicant and the appeal subsequently withdrawn. Two of the alcohol cases have had their CUPs revoked at some point after approval. These included the Bamboo Restaurant and Industry Theaters, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So roughly of the seventeen that requested waivers, 40% or thereabouts, were denied?
Correct.
And of those, all but one were, or all but two were overturned by the city council?
That is also correct.
Okay, thank you. Well, ladies and gentlemen, what would you like to do?
Full disclosure, so, since I'm the commissioner that tasks staff with pulling the data analytics on that information, I think we all know how I feel. I'm all for smart growth in this community. However, if we have an ordinance that's standing, that's in existence, if we're going to continue to provide waivers, then perhaps we need to consider changing the ordinance for distance.
Well, I think it's pretty much a given that we have restrictions on alcohol for a reason, and I know on some of the decisions I made that have denied it, that were subsequently overturned, I felt that I was following municipal codes, so I'm kind of adding my voice to Cassie's that if the code was more, you know, where I didn't have to have waivers and stuff like that, and didn't have to use, you know, discretion, I realize that that's our job up here is to be, to use that type of process to come up with some stuff, but it looks to me like we have some issues, you know, 40% is a considerable number, something to consider to, because when I would look at alcohol permits and stuff, I'm looking at it from the point of view that it's going to probably cause some sort of harm to the community. I realize the harm is outweighed by the need to have a certain convenience to the community that we should have, and hopefully it won't affect the property next door, but we have regulations, and I would really, truly like to see them either enforced or rewritten so we didn't have to, you know, look like we're more in step with how the council wants us to move forward. If they want us to move forward with approving these, then we probably should redo the language.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll say, well, I think the code and everything gives us adequate discretion, and I think the fact that, you know, many are, have been, many denials have been overturned by the council, others upheld, I think, I think in general shows we're doing a pretty good job of using that discretion, and I don't, I guess I'm just, I'm kind of on the fence. On one hand, I wouldn't mind some more concrete direction in the code, because I think that's best for the public, so that an applicant or anyone in the private sector who wants to pursue a business opportunity has a better idea going into it, what the requirements are going to be and what the expectations are before they make a large investment. So I guess I'm seeing both sides, and I'm just kind of trying to work through what we can do to try to get that number that is appealed.
We're going to run out of street corners, so we won't have any more mini mart applications, probably.
But, you know, something along that to, I think it's a good discussion.
Well, you go ahead.
Was there, one of these has resulted in litigation, I know one of the mini markets has, and so the worry that I have is this possibility that if somebody was sued in the future, or sues the city in the future, well, what was the criteria? What was our criteria for allowing that discretion to have that alcohol there? Or was this person here able to get their license and this person wasn't? I mean, we need to have that criteria down pat, so the legal people have a way to prevent any kind of.
So you're arguing the point of use by right, and then if, if all applications were used by right, then the commission would have no discretion, we wouldn't need, we wouldn't need a planning commission. Think about that for a minute.
Perhaps this is something that we don't make a decision tonight. I'm looking at you, Ms. Corbett, to see if there's something that we can do down the line to perhaps look at this a little bit more with, in depth with the data analytics that have been provided by staff.
Yeah, you shouldn't take any specific, necessarily specific action about this, but you can certainly direct staff to do further research and to bring back additional information. If you want to give us sort of the parameters of what you're wanting to see, we can all work together to bring you something that will be helpful to you in your discussion. We could try to do that for July, but more likely August, I'm guessing, but if you want to give us sort of, sort of the parameters, we'd be absolutely happy to put that together for you.
That's a good point. The parameters would be like, the ABC has so many licenses in a census tract, and one of the census's tracks over on Avenue I and Sierra Highway, we were going to add the fifth one, and ABC had required only two in that census tract. So possibly the analytics would be, why did ABC want us to have so few alcohol places in these areas? And then what would be the impact of having it more convenient? Is there going to be higher medical issues? Is there going to be higher crimes? Is there going to be higher trash? I mean, there's got to be, got to be studies on how this works, otherwise there wouldn't have been ABC making regulations on two.
I think those census tracts were established in, before most people around here were born.
You'll recall that Mr. Durico, I believe, some months back, sort of walked us through what that census tract data is, and it, it's not linked only to here, it's linked to other areas. It doesn't have any real, actual meaning. I know that sounds mean, I don't mean it to sound that way, but it doesn't really provide us any boots-on-the-ground value here.
The real question is, under conditional uses, whatever they may be, in this particular case, waivers for alcohol beverage sales not associated with those uses that are exempt from the waiver process, which is a very narrow class of uses. All right?
I remember we had Tarzana Treatment Center in here talking about it, and we know that alcohol causes problems in a community, and there's some push to make sure that we address those issues. And lately, we've been adding more and more and more alcohol availability, and the only reason is, is convenience. And I want to know, community-wide, what the aspect of that convenience is going to be? Is it going to increase anything, or is it going to decrease anything? Is it going to make people happier? Is it going to make people less happy? I mean, if we have more people, you know, we're looking to move the liquor stores, give them a little bit more look at, to make sure that they keep their act clean, but if we have a license for alcohol, just as long as it's even beer and wine, what effect does that have? Is it having any effect on the community at all? Or do we even care? I mean, we, we obviously do, because we have a lot of health issues in the city that we want to address, and LA County, this way, has some of the highest diabetes rates. So what percentage is the alcohol leading into that?
I'm not sure that a lot of that is quantifiable. Quite frankly, I don't know how we can quantify the health effect of having a fifth convenience store in an area versus only four convenience stores. I'm not sure that we can drill down that much. We could certainly look at calls for service and have calls for service in an area increased as a result or after another mart or store has opened up. There may not be a direct one-to-one correlation, but that's, that's a number we could actually give you, but some of the other, I'm, frankly, I don't, I don't know how we would get that information to you.
And once you get it, then you still come down to discretionary decision on the part of the members to make a determination of a modification to the ordinance that then the city council may or may not take up. So we don't set the ordinance, I mean, we don't make the final determination. However, we do have, and the city council does look to this commission, to carry the heavy load, basically, and flush out all of the issues, and listen to the public testimony, and make the best determination we can, given the information provided to us. Whether everyone agrees with that, I mean, there are occasions when we do have split votes, right, Ms. Smith?
Well, pretty much with any alcohol issue, it usually comes down to a split vote. So, same thing, I think that's why we have a seven-member commission to consider all the facts and, you know, weed through the facts and then come to our own decisions.
It's a good process.
So, back full circle to my sense is, some folks are suggesting that we probably want to leave the structure of the regulations the way they currently are, and others think that there may be some need to modify them in some way. So.
It's not that, that I so much want to change the ordinance, I'm looking at what the offshoot, the result is when we put another mini mart, I'm using a mini mart as an example. So nine mini mart gas stations, this, I'm looking at the December 2016 data that Ms. Swain just mentioned, and then seven initially denied, six appealed, and five won out. That tells me that we need to look at the ordinance. That's all I'm asking.
So, looking at it in, how? What criteria?
Do we change the distance? I mean, since most of it's because of the distance waiver, and I think it, everyone knows how I feel when we get up here and it's a distance waiver because of alcohol. It's almost a known, it's not totally true, I have voted, I have voted for, in some occasions, for a distance waiver, but nine times out of ten, I look at it and go, what makes sense?
Right, and I think that's what we were talking about, it's a case-by-case basis, that each of us is going to see differently. Sometimes we'll see it the same, sometimes we will see it differently, and I don't know that changing the ordinance is going to change, change any of that, if that makes any sense.
But then I don't understand, what's the fix? Because we're going to continually put gas stations and, with liquor sales on every corner, it seems.
But, but that's, that will be, the approval or the disapproval will be the vote of this commission as individuals, considering, you know, there, there have been projects I have voted against. There have been projects you voted for, and I could probably say the same for everyone on this commission. Again, I think it's that best what our job is as planning commissioners, is what Chairman Vos says, is sometimes, you know, dealing with those, digging deep and dealing with those decisions.
But, but I want the ordinance to make sense. If we keep going back to it and there's a waiver every single time that we see it, then it means that there's a, there's a, there's an issue there. Not issue, but that, that it needs to be corrected, perhaps, or changed, or, I think there's a lot more dialogue that needs to occur.
Or the reason why the distance requirement was there. What, maybe we need to define why the distance requirement was there. If we understood why it was there, if, you know, if it becomes so, you know, routine that we just waive it, then we need to understand why it was there in the first place.
Or, to the other extreme, exclude those alcohol beverage uses that require a waiver from the ordinance, and then we wouldn't have to ever consider one. So that type, that type of use would be excluded, which is not unusual. Or, you can't exclude it per se, but you can limit its location, such as sexual-oriented businesses, for example. That be correct, Ms. Corbett?
The analogy is correct. I, I don't know about limiting a mini mart to certain zones in terms of what that looks like in real life. Is anybody going to go to a heavy industrial zone just to pick up a six-pack of beer?
Well, the testimony, you know, the testimony received is that the alcohol beverage sales are incidental to a gas station mini mart. They really don't amount to anything, but they're necessary for the success of the business, verbatim. So, I don't necessarily agree with your, with your position or conversation, and I'm not sure it's a position, your conversation.
It's not a position.
Because if we can, if we can take a class of business and exclude it from all but some locations, that's constitutional, we can do that.
Absolutely, you can do that. You absolutely can do that.
So, but we can't eliminate a class of business entirely, right? So, if we're going to look at one side of this issue, let's look at the other side. Let's look at all parameters. Since we hardly have anything on our agendas, except for all this tonight, other than that, we hardly have anything to do, right? Would you agree with that?
I agree.
Enough direction from everybody? Great, thank you all. All right. The next items are public hearings. So without objection, we open our public hearing on item 3A, which is a one-year extension for tentative tract map number 63095. Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
There are no speakers.
None?
The applicant will make, is available, should the commission have questions, but there are no speakers in addition to that.
Anybody have any questions of the applicant on this? All right? Any objections to waiving the staff report? All right, then, we'll close the public hearing on this item and consider a motion.
Move staff recommendation.
I second.
So this is the last and final extension of a tract map that's been before us for 12 years. What do you think the chances are of this getting built? How do you vote? No?
Oh, I'm sorry, with one abstention.
Six-oh, right?
Six-oh, one abstention.
All right, very good, thank you. Next item is a public hearing. So without objection, we open the public hearing on tentative tract map 67582. Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
There are no speaker cards.
All right. So, anyone care to hear a staff report? Nope? All right, we'll waive the staff report and close the public hearing, consider a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number 18-13 granting a one-year extension to June 18, 2019, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the revised conditions list, attachment to resolution number 05-30.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, this, this extension is another 12-year extension, or the 12th year of an extension, and the last and final extension under the MAP Act, right?
The motion carries six-oh with one abstention.
Thank you.
Is it an abstention, or is it an absence?
It's one absence.
It's an absence.
Okay.
All right.
But Diana's here in spirit.
You said she was watching. Okay, and the next item is item 3C, which is a public hearing on tentative tract, tract map extension 72565. So the public hearing is open on this item. Do we have speaker's cards?
There are no speaker cards.
All right, thank you. So we'll waive the staff report and close the public hearing, consider a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number 1814 granting a one-year extension to May 19, 2019, based on the findings contained in the staff report, and subject to the revised conditions list, attachment to resolution number 14-05.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. This is the last extension as well, although this is not, this is only stale-dated from So, they will, they will have their full opportunity to develop the property. How do you vote, please? How do you vote, please?
Motion carries six-oh with one absence.
Thank you.
And I must say, she did comment, yes, I'm absent, I didn't abstain.
You guys. All right, next item is item number four, which is a proposed shopping cart ordinance. Our agenda indicates, well, this item has been published for a public hearing, so if there are folks here tonight that wish to offer testimony relative to any proposed shopping cart ordinance, they're certainly welcome to address the commission tonight. However, this agenda indicated we were going to continue this item till the next regular meeting. Do we have any speakers on this item?
There are no speakers.
All right, then. So without objection, we'll continue this item to the next regular meeting. Okay, item number, excuse me, item number five. This is a new public hearing on conditional use permit 18-02. So the public hearing is open. We have speaker cards on this, no doubt. Ms. Campena is presenting.
Good evening, Chairman Vos and members of the planning commission. This item before use conditional use permit 1802. The proposed project is a request to allow for the operation and construction of a medical cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility that consists of tenanted improvements to two existing buildings and construction of two new buildings. The proposed project will be built in three phases. The subject site is located at 45761 Division Street. The proposed project would be located on four lots and is conditioned to merge the four lots into one. There is currently a vacant industrial warehouse, office structure, grain mill, shed, and truck scale. The subject site is approximately 5.28 acres. The overall project would include a new paved parking lot with landscaping and parking spaces along the southerly and easterly portion of the subject site. The entire development would have a six-foot-tall block wall with controlled entrances located off of Division Street and Trevor Avenue. The proposed project will be built in three phases. Phase one is in yellow, phase two is in green, and phase three is in orange. Phase one includes a demo of the existing grain mill, shed, and truck scale. The existing warehouse would be converted into a cultivation and manufacturing facility, and the office structure would be renovated and updated. 5,079 square feet would be dedicated to cultivation and 576 square feet to manufacturing. The existing office would involve tenant improvements. The office building would not be visible from public view at complete buildout. The medical cultivation and manufacturing facility would involve a re-facade that would include blue accents to be implemented to match the entire development. This is the phase-two floor plan, and approximately 52,500-square-foot building on the northwesterly portion of the property would be constructed as part of phase two. It would include 22 cultivation rooms that are 1,316 square feet and a 1,326-square-foot manufacturing area. The proposed building is a one-story, 20-foot-tall building with blue architectural accents, wood veneers, and architectural trellises. Phase three is the construction of an approximately 29,800-square-foot building on a northeastern portion of the property. It would include 10 cultivation rooms that are 1,988 square feet and a 3,354-square-foot manufacturing area. The one-story, 20-foot-tall building would include blue architectural accents, wood veneers, and architectural trellises. The implementation of architectural features would establish a uniform design and materials throughout the development. Decorative paths are implemented throughout the proposed development. These paths are located at the all-proposed buildings and the parking lot. Between phase one and phase three, the proposed project includes a pathway that includes a landscaped area that would provide shade and visible, pleasing path of travel. The pedestrian areas provide an environment that is inviting and creates a safe and attractive area. In addition, the proposed project provides landscaping throughout the entire site. It includes 15 different plants with six trees and nine shrubs. The parking lot is lined with trees with a minimum 10-foot landscape buffer along Division Street and Trevor Avenue to help mitigate any negative effect of industrial operation. Staff recommends that planning commission adopt reso number 1816 approving CUP 1802 and adopting a mitigated negative declaration. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. Well, the applicant or the representative here tonight to address us? Good evening.
Good evening. Commissioners and chairman, I appreciate your time tonight. My name is Brett Haas, one of the general partners of the project, as well as the applicant that you guys just went over. I'm here to answer any questions you guys have. I'll do my best to answer the questions or get the answers to you if you wish.
We typically prefer to ask the applicant questions. It's more fun, actually.
I mean, get you the answers, I mean, that you guys are asking for.
I didn't hear your name.
I'm Brett Haas.
The last time I saw you, you didn't have a little whisker.
That's correct, it's been a little while.
Is the big yellow building going to be the first thing that's torn down?
It is. We're going to repurpose that building. I think the existing footprint is 12,000, so we're going to keep the existing footprint, tear down the silo that's there, and then rebuild.
So all the dust collector stuff up on top, that's all going to be removed, that building?
Correct. Correct.
But you're going to reuse the building, you said, right?
We're going to repurpose that building. We're going to tear down the silo that's there. A lot of it's old farming equipment, so that's going to be repurposed. We're going to rebuild that building to incorporate phase one of the project, which Cynthia just illustrated. So that'll be phase one, and then phase two will be a second project next to that, and then phase three will be, phase two and phase three are going to be both new builds on the same property.
It's going to be an interesting video to take as you tear it down. It's kind of like a landmark for Lancaster.
I agree. It's...
If I can't ever remember it not being there.
There may be some challenges with that. Apparently, you're obliged to make inquiries of certain state agencies relative to the historical significance of the building?
We have. There's been nothing, part of our report, nothing to my knowledge, has come up on that. I mean, that was all part of our due diligence, I think.
But it is a condition, it is a condition.
Okay, and I think...
You are aware of that?
I am aware of that. Jocelyn, was the stuff that we provided, do you remember that?
Excuse me?
So my understanding is there was nothing that came back in that historical report.
All right. So I believe we received from you a correspondence indicating that you had no objections to the condition as proposed?
Correct.
All of them?
Correct.
Okay. We'll hold you to that.
Okay.
Kind of funny that way. So, let me go through my notes here. We've determined who the applicants are, and you've gone through the pre-licensing process with the city, so you have the availability of a license from the city pursuant to the planning commission approval and any subsequent appeal to the city council. So, you're moving through the process. You do understand, we do not see, we, the commission does not see your application? Because a lot of the information in the application for this type of a use is restricted from public information. Some of the financial information, certainly social security numbers, that sort of stuff. So we also don't see your security plan. We get a report from Mr. Diarico, our director, indicating that the security plan meets the ordinance qualification. What I didn't see in the package was your demolition plan. Now, we have a whole series of sheets on tenant improvements and facade treatments and that sort of stuff, but I don't see a demo plan, so I don't know what your scope, Vice Chair Hall spoke about it a bit, but I don't see a demo plan.
I know we had one drawn up. I can certainly get that to you. I apologize, you guys don't have that ahead of time, but I can certainly get that to you.
Well, the reason I bring it up, there are environmental impacts relative to the demolition of this project, and there's a considerable number of conditions in the environmental section of this. So for me to make a fair determination of the appropriateness of those mitigations, I would have to see how that facility is being treated, the existing facility.
Sure.
For instance, when it's done, what will it look like? The plan that we've been provided with shows a hip-roofed tin building. Is that what the intent is?
So there's going to be stucco, there's going to be, we have submitted some landscape plans and also some plans what the future building will look like.
But the building plans don't show that. That we've received.
Okay, I know, I know they were in the original submission that we submitted to the city, so I don't know how I can get those to you, I mean, I can bring them back to you, but I know they were submitted as part of the original submission package.
You are aware that there are environmental issues relative to the risk of disturbance of migrant bats and those potential protected species? And you know there's bats in there, right?
I would assume there probably are.
Well, they were years ago, the last time I was in the place. They're there.
I know we had to do a, one of the studies that we did, they researched all the natural habitat, or the wildlife that's in the area. Owls, I think, was another issue that came up. None of that came up in the report that we produced. I don't know if you, I'm assuming you don't have a copy of that, which I don't know how I can get that to you if that comes through.
Staff has already reviewed that, I'm sure. What I'm concerned about is that the condition, the environmental mitigation condition indicates you're obliged, which I find kind of interesting, and I'll address staff on this when we get to their part, making a determination of the existence of a protected species of bat within that facility six months prior to the demolition, which is different from the nesting bird studies and development standards during the nesting period for all other birds. Now, bat is not a bird, it's a mammal. So, maybe that's the reason. Who knows what California Fish and Wildlife Regulations, why they come up with what they do, but we're obliged to administer those.
Sure.
So, I don't have, and I'll discuss, I'll discuss with staff here tonight, the phase-one building design and its conformance to the phase-two and phase-three designs as proposed. Typically, our position that everything matches. There's development standards in industrial zones that your architect is going to comply with, so we just want to make sure that that's appropriate. But it appears from the plan that was submitted that there's galvanized sheeting, and that's typically what's on the existing building, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You are aware that there is in the conditions that under General Advisory Number Nine, that no public street improvements can be made between November 15th and January 2nd of the year, of any year. You aware of that?
I was not aware of that, but we will comply with that.
Well, it's in one of the conditions you agreed to.
I don't, I apologize, because I don't have the conditions in front of me, but...
You sent us a letter that said you did, so that's why I'm asking these questions.
I understand.
So you are aware of it.
We will comply.
Frankly, I think in this particular location, it's kind of a silly requirement, because the purpose of the restriction for off-site improvements is the impact on retail shoppers during the holiday season. I doubt very seriously that you have many retail shoppers on North Division at HA. However, there may be some.
I agree with you.
And I will discuss with our colleagues here whether or not we think that's an appropriate condition.
Okay.
So, your operation, your building, it's a 24-foot clear-story building, right?
Correct.
Okay, and the reason it's 24-foot high, the reason?
Part of the design was incorporated enough for ventilation, for lighting, so it had to be sufficient clearance for those things to take place above where the cultivation's going to take place.
So there's no plan and there's no approval to have multi-level growing in the building?
No. It's all single-story growing.
Okay. I've heard in some cases that there are multiple, multi-level growing operations in places, not here, but other places. It also could be the reason that in future, if this particular business venture decides to relocate or expand somewhere else, that a 24-foot clear-story industrial building has a better marketability than an 18-foot, for instance.
Sure.
That's probably part of the reason as well, I would imagine, right? You do know you're required to connect to the public sewer, right?
Correct.
Okay. You also know that you're in a flood hazard zone. I will address my comments and questions to staff, my comments to you. The existing building is at a given elevation. You're in a flood hazard zone. That requires a certain mitigation. So, we don't have a grading plan or anything really to refer to, but I'll be curious to ask the city engineer how the existing building will conform to the conditions as implied in the condition list, as it impacts the flood hazard zone. And just to make it clear, the city's architectural guidelines for industrial properties calls out things like articulation of all the building facades, not just the front or the sides, but all sides.
Correct.
A uniform design, and the reason I brought up the question was, the plan in front of me doesn't indicate a uniform design. Those are design standards which are imposed on this project.
Right. I can tell you, the plans that were designed, it is going to be a uniform look across the whole project.
Great.
That was part of it.
And I think that's it. Others may have some comments, too, I don't know. Anyone?
Yeah, I have a question. With the phases that you have, is there a time you're going to be finished, or are we doing it in sections, or?
Construction is more my background. That's always a challenge. Our hope is to be completed with phase one in 12 months. That's our, that's our hope. Phase two would continue, would start right after the finish of phase one, and then that would run probably another 10 to 12 months, and then phase three would be phase-in after that. So our...
So you're looking at about three and a half years?
Two and a half years is probably a fair... Two and a half years is probably a fair, uh, is probably a fair timeline to get through, follow into Phase Three.
Anything else?
No.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thanks very much, Mr. Haas, appreciate your...
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sharing with us, and if there are any other speakers, you'll have an opportunity to rebut if you care to. All right?
Thank you.
Do we have speakers?
There are no speakers in this item.
Great. So, question of staff. This, the new standard condition on the, uh, public right-of-way improvement moratorium, and if you will, from February 15th to January 2nd, it's a new standard condition imposed by policy, um, across the board. Does it really make sense to put it in this, on this particular project?
If the commission feels that we should eliminate it, we definitely can. This is a standard condition that we just wanted to advise the applicant on, but we can definitely eliminate it if that's the desire of the commission.
Well, when, when you're putting a development project together and, you know, and sequencing your on- and off-site work and coordinating that in a very robust bidding environment for construction these days, the less the impediments, the more successful the project, at least from my point of view. Um, so, I didn't see in, in the standard conditions where, um, the agency assumes the responsibility for the finished public improvements, or not, in this case. So the right-of-way improvements in Division and also in Trevor, I believe, right? Those, those are the two off-site improvements, streets, water sewer, whatever, sidewalks, all the rest of it. In this particular case, the city will assume the responsibility for upkeep and maintenance on those within our jurisdiction at completion of the project, once they're dedicated. Is that the case?
That is correct. Both Trevor and Division are public streets.
Okay. And the condition requiring it to happen at building, uh, to be completed prior to building occupancy, that's all those offsites, right?
That is correct.
So Phase One, all the, all the offsites have to be in?
When we, when they implement...
Phase One of the, of the, of the construction of, or reconstruction, or whatever it is in Phase One, whatever that scope of work is, prior to the occupancy of that scope of work, the offsite improvements must be installed. That's what your condition says, and just make sure that everybody's clear.
We will do a phasing matrix with the applicant when they come in to submit their improvement plans, which will lay out a plan to complete the necessary improvements for each phase.
So what we're approving, approving may not, or considering for approval may not necessarily be what it is?
No, it, it, you are approving what it is, but we'll do, and it's typical, we've done this with, I don't know, a handful of projects over the last year where they, they phase it, they come in with a phasing matrix, and we decide the, the appropriate infrastructure that's needed for each phase, and, and, and once we agree upon that, that's how they implement the project.
I see. So, Item 74 on the conditional list, the hazard zone, can you address that for us?
Can you point me to where you're, you're at? I'm not following.
Item 74 on the flood hazard zone in the, on the conditional list on page 10. The project appears to be located in a special flood hazard zone. All construction within the flood plain shall comply with the city's flood hazard ordinance.
So I think, I think your question was related to how they're going to elevate the structure meet FEMA guidelines. So FEMA guidelines require any additions to an existing structure to be elevated. If that exist, addition goes over 50% of the square footage of the existing structure, everything has to be elevated. So, so...
So the plans are, that are in front of us tell us what? There's no addition, it's just tenant improvements to an existing building that will partially be demolished, demolished, and certain improvements made, is that what's before us?
Correct. And as long as the additions do not go over the 50% threshold, then they do not need, or they are not required by FEMA regulations to elevate the entire structure.
So if the project is in a flood zone, identified flood zone, and we all know from experience that that's a flood hazard area, and when those occasional heavy rains happen, the area gets inundated, right? The public streets and, oh, land, over the land gets inundated as well. So, follow along with me here. The Phase Two and Phase Three buildings would have to conform to the FEMA requirement and may have to be raised two, three, four feet in elevation, so they're out of the flood zone, but the first phase doesn't.
Correct, as long as they're staying under 50%.
That makes absolutely no sense to me. Now, I don't know if the applicant's aware of the risk, and what would be the city's liability, if any?
FEMA, FEMA is, they're the ones who back the insurance companies who will insure it, and therefore, if, as long as they're complying with FEMA regulations, they'll be able to get flood insurance for the property.
So if you're in a flood hazard zone and you don't mitigate it, you likely probably can't get flood insurance, or you'd be paying a substantial premium if you could find somebody to insure you, notwithstanding the use. So, just to be clear, the, the proposal before us in Phase One is to utilize the existing building and not change its footprint or elevation, is to utilize the existing structure and make modifications to it, no additions to, but modifications to it, in effect, exterior and interior modification, right?
That's my understanding, but it looks like the applicant wants to add some clarity.
I just wanted to come up, I, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just wanted to clarify. So you are correct, existing building that's there, it's a 12,000-square-foot pad, and that pad is raised, I want to say roughly four feet off the ground, that's the base of the shop that's there. Uh, my understanding is we did, we did do an, a grading plan. Our intent is to not build additions outside of that pad, if that makes sense. When we build Phase Two and Phase Three, we are going to comply with whatever is required of us, and we are anticipating possibly having to raise the building to account for, for the flood zone. So, um, so to answer your question, I, I don't know if that clarifies it, but there is that pad, so it is...
No, I understand what, I understand what the challenges are, that's the reason I brought it up. Um, my concern is, we're approving, considering approval of a project that is at a high risk. Um, I just want to make sure it's on record. Do you understand it? Do your partner understands it?
Correct.
The city engineer understands it, and it may well, you know, floor, site plans look great on a, on a plane. The reality of development of those sites relative to exterior hazards you have no control over.
Right.
Impact your right, I'm not sure which side you carry your wallet on, either the left or the right side, right? That's serious stuff.
I agree. I just wanted to clarify that it is raised, we will comply with whatever, whatever's required of us. I don't, again, this is...
Great.
I gotta say, it's my first rodeo, but we will comply with whatever's required of us.
All right, super. Thank you for the clarification.
What would he think about that number five?
What's that?
What did the applicant, what would you think about number five, that condition?
Which is?
The one that was the...
Oh, the, um...
Holiday schedule for construction. I guess it doesn't matter to him.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter. Well, if I was digging dirt, I wouldn't want it. Less restrictions, the better, thank you very much. But it's up to the, you know, just suggesting removing it, that's all.
Sorry, I just wanted to address, Commissioner Hall, so we have no intention of, of doing construction during November and December, I think that was the concern that you just brought up, Zacharak?
Well, I was thinking, if we pulled it, it would give you less impediment to your construction. If you don't care, then we just make the motion.
Well, I, I, I would appreciate whatever, I mean, whatever the commission wants, but we're, if you pull that, then obviously that helps us, but we have no intention of, of doing construction during November and December.
I think we should always give the flexibility when it's...
Yep.
Doesn't apply, when the concern doesn't apply.
Yeah, and the way it's written, you can always beg Mother May out of the city manager. All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Swin, talk to us about bats, would you?
Okay.
Not bats in the belfry, but...
I have lots of those.
Bats in the elevator.
Bats in the elevator?
Brain elevator.
The one here at City Hall or the one on their site?
The one on their site, yeah.
Okay. Um, there is the possibility of bats, obviously. Um, as far as I know, they didn't find any bats when they did the biological survey of the site, however, it, it's a prime location for them to occur. Um, the biological report actually does identify a mitigation measure, um, and specifically states, "A qualified biologist should perform a bat survey no less than six months prior to the demolition of existing buildings, and if bats are occupying the buildings to be demolished, then exclusionary devices and bat boxes will be installed no less than four months prior and outside of the breeding season," basically to prevent them from entering their home, kind of like we do with burling hells during non-breeding season.
Right.
Um, I think in this instance, the, the mitigation measure was condensed, so that what shows up in the initial study is that they do a biological survey for bats six months prior, and if they're found, consult with a bat expert to establish the appropriate procedures.
Okay, and then the cultural resource piece on the Sturks Ranch issue?
Yes.
We've not seen many of those, and you share with us what that's all about?
So apparently Sturks Ranch was a fairly large ranch here. Um, this is the first time I've heard of it. Um, this silo may or may not have been part of it, and there may or may not have been a railway spur that fed the site.
Oh, there was.
I'll take your word on it. Um, so the mitigation measure requires the applicant to have a archaeologist, historian, do research to determine whether or not that silo was part of the ranch, or if it was part of something else. And if it was part of the ranch, then it needs to be documented in accordance with existing procedures.
There's Sturks Airport out there, too, so just dirt scratched out of the desert out there.
Sturks or Bohunks?
I'm pretty sure it says Sturks. When I look at the map, it'll say, say that, because it's right between like 20th East and, and that H6 corridor there.
Okay.
And I've, I've had a guy fly me out of it once, but it's basically, uh, alfalfa fields.
Right.
And, uh...
It's on the 7.5 quadrant, it's exactly shown on that map.
That, so that's Sturks part of that ranch?
Yeah.
So, so that's what the condition is?
That'd be a lot of fun. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then the other hazard is material asbestos survey, I, you know, it's a given that there's asbestos in that facility.
Right, and the Phase One actually acknowledges that. Um, so prior to demolition, they actually have to go sample to determine where it is, they have to abate it in accordance with applicable regulations.
Right.
Um, and with qualified abatement personnel.
It's not just a couple of pieces of transite pipe you're dealing with.
No.
Lead paint and...
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so all of that needs to be abated before the buildings can be demolished.
Yep. Expensive undertaking. And then USTs as well, potentially.
Correct.
So, did the Phase One pick up anything on, on the up gradient on that, on the underground storage tanks? Do you recall?
It doesn't look like USTs were identified during the survey, however, um, there were prior building permits for septic system and cisterns and a truck scale, so it, it is likely that there was a UST at some point.
Yeah, as I recall, when we did the school, there was a, there were some on the Old Fairground site, and there was some on the, on the others, on the west side of Division as well.
Yes.
That we had to fuss with.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good, thank you. Anything else from anyone? All right. No other speakers, the applicant's done sharing with us. So, without objection, we'll close the public hearing, consider a motion.
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 18-16, approving conditional use permit number 18-02 to allow for the operation and construction of a medical cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility that consists of tenant improvements to an existing 9,688-square-foot industrial building, the 804-square-foot office building, and new construction of an approximately 29,800-square-foot building and 52,500-square-foot building located at 45761 Division Street, and adopting a mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote.
Motion passes with a vote of five to one with one absence.
Five yeses, one no, and one absent. All right, thank you. Okay, the next item is conditional use permit, item number six, conditional use permit number 18-07. We've been, um, advised that this item is to be continued at the request of the applicant?
The applicant failed to do proper noticing.
Oh. So, we're obliged to open the public hearing, which is open, consider, consider any testimony that anyone cares to offer, and I don't know if you have a speaker's card, right?
There are none.
And then, without objection, we'll leave the public hearing open until the next regular meeting. That it? Okay. We don't need to hear a staff report or anything, we'll just deal with that next meeting, right? Okay. All right, so, without objection, this item's continued to the next regular meeting. Item six. Okay. The next item... The next item is probably what everybody's here for, is item number seven. Before I call that item, I have a statement to make. This particular project is in relatively close proximity to my residence, within a mile, slightly less, actually. So, I, in reviewing the requirements of disclosure and recusing yourself, myself in this case, for any potential conflict, I've just felt it's in the best, my best interest to recuse myself from hearing this tonight. So, I will relinquish the chair to Vice Chair Hall, and he will then take up this matter after another commissioner has something to share.
I had the exact same situation as Chairman Boz. We live in the same neighborhood, and my residence is also very close to this project, so I am going to also recuse myself.
So, to recuse ourselves means that we leave. And since they made this the last item on the agenda, we're out of here.
We don't even have to go get some lunch.
Number seven is our master plan community, Avante South and Avante West. This one is the Avante South Environmental Protection Plan. So, the first thing we probably should do is hear staff report on it.
Vice Chairman Hall and Commissioners, the applicant is proposing a master plan development consisting of residential, commercial, and in public uses on approximately 307 acres. Upon full buildout, there would be a total of 1,700 dwelling units, including 175 age targeted units, 256 active adult units, and 325 multifamily units, 213,600 square feet of commercial uses, 31.5 acres of parks, open space, a 12-point acre, 12.8 acre school site, a 1.3 acre fire station site, and 34-point, 38.4 acres of internal streets. And you can see, the project site is made up of two subareas. Avante West is generally bounded by Avenue K4, K8, 70th Street West, and 75th Street West, and the Avante South subarea is bounded by Avenue K8, Avenue L, 62nd Street West, and 70th Street West. In order to facilitate the development of this community, the applicant is requesting the approval of a general plan amendment, zone change, specific plan, tentative track map, development agreement, and the certification of a final EIR. General Plan Amendment Number 1601, we changed the designation of Avante West from non-urban residential to urban residential with a specific plan overlay, and changed the designation on Avante South from urban, urban residential with a specific plan overlay to mixed use with a specific plan overlay. Zone Change Number 1601, we changed the zoning on Avante West from rural residential minimum lot size 2.5 acres to specific plan, and changed the zoning on a portion of Avante South for the school site from its current zoning to school. The specific plan would act as the zoning regulations for the proposed development and divides the project site into 30 planning areas, each of which would allow for a mix of residential, commercial, open space, or institutional uses. This is the layout of the specific planning. You can see each of the individual planning areas. So, this was low-density residential. This would be the high-density residential, the park site, the fire station site. The green areas in here are the parks. The red is the commercial, and the yellow, the, this color darker yellow, is the medium-density residential. It encompasses the active adult and the age-restricted units. The specific plan is divided into five sections: the introduction, development plan, development regulations, design guidelines, and in the administration and implementation section. The introduction provides the purpose, planning process, entitlements, and a general overview of the project site. The development plan identifies land use designations, conceptual land use plan, land use policies, the parks and open space plan, the mobility plan, and the infrastructure plan. The development regulations identify regulations for the proposed uses, including permitted uses, lot area, lot coverage, landscaping, parking, building height, and setbacks for each of the planning areas. The design guidelines provide the community design, landscape, and architectural design guidelines for projects within the planning area. And the administration and implementation section establishes procedures for subsequent approvals and modifications to the plan. Tentative Track Map 74312 divides the entire project site into a total of 44 lots to accommodate the 30 planning areas identified in the specific plan. As you can see, each of these lots, this is the school site lot, the multifamily lot, some of the, the moderate-density residential lots. Each of these lots could encompass, actually, each of the planning areas could encompass one or multiple lots, and these lots can be further subdivided or approved for a specific site plan like a commercial center. And we just, this is 65th here, these are the drainage basins. This is Avante West, and these are the proposed roundabout locations and the design of each of them. Development Agreement 1801 basically establishes a 12-year agreement with one five-year extension possible as long as the developer meets certain construction milestones identified within the development agreement. It also freezes development impact fees for five years, and the increase in development impact fees would then be phased in over a five-year period, increasing by 20% each year. It grants the developer, developers' age-restricted projects would receive a 25% reduction in fees. The non-age-restricted units would receive a 25% reduction in park and recreation fees, and the developer would pay $350 per unit for units covered by specific maps at the time of building permit issuance. The environmental impact report, this, this generally outlines the process that they went through. We released a notice of preparation in July of 2016. Scoping meeting was held July 27th. There was a 30-day comment period on the NOP. The draft EIR was released for public review from November 9th to December 26th of last year, and the final EIR was released June 8th of this year. Mitigation measures have been identified for aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards, noise, and traffic. All impacts would be less than significant, with the exception of project-specific and cumulative freeway impacts with the incorporation of the identified mitigation measures. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The developer and his team is present, and they are also available to answer any questions you may have.
We may have some. Do you guys have any questions? You do?
No, I'm interested in the question.
Do you guys have any questions for her? Um, a specific plan is supposed to, uh, the specific plan, it's supposed to enhance zoning and design guidelines for the city?
It's supposed to what?
Enhance the design guidelines for the city?
It replaces the design guidelines for the city for the specific location. The design guidelines contained within the specific plan are equal to or exceed the design guidelines that apply generally to the city.
So, on page 56, where it talks about Avante's specific plan guidelines differ from city design guidelines, the specific plan will prevail. And you just said that all of those design guidelines will exceed or are standard ones?
Yeah, no, I just said all of them. I just said that they are equal to, or they exceed some of them, but they're not less than.
They're not less than.
Right.
Equal to or more than.
Yes.
And so, if we okay this, they have up to 17 years to complete the project?
Yeah, we did plan.
And the, um, the structure that you have in place for telling them how to proceed, whether they can get the extension after 12 years, those, that doesn't, those methods don't account for anything before 12 years, right? So-
They don't account for what?
If they're going to have design, if they're going to have construction milestones that they have to meet-
Mm-hmm.
-to get an extension, did they have them prior to 12 years, or is it only after 12 years?
So, the development agreement outlines what they have to do and when they have to meet it in order to be granted a five-year extension on top of the 12-year length of the development agreement.
So, we should feel pretty comfortable if we did okay this to, that we will not be degrading zoning, we will not be degrading design guidelines, we will actually be having a master plan for the future that will enhance and push forward our visions that we have?
I believe so.
Okay. Do we have any, um, any more questions? Do we have any speakers?
There are no speakers on this item.
No speakers? Did the project developer want to talk to us, or are you all satisfied?
I believe the project developer has a presentation if he still wants to give it.
I think that at this time, I'm Jim Powers, Mr. Vice Chair, and members of the commission with Royal Investors Group, that if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them. We've brought along all of our consultants, engineers, biologists, air quality people to answer any specific questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any specific questions? I, I think I pretty much addressed them with Ms. Swain because of the, you know, you're going to be taking over pretty much our stuff with this document, so I was just curious if we had, were we going to degrade or it was going to improve?
Absolutely. Everything will be, at a minimum, the city standards and most of them have improved requirements that each of the builders that come in will be responsible for. The nice thing about that document is it gives the city staff the ability to deny a project if it does not meet those standards. It's very specific.
I don't have any other questions. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On the specific map of, you said there was a $350 fee for each unit that they were going to build? Is that because, why would, why would you do that?
the city wouldn't normally grant in exchange for giving the city things that we can't typically ask for. So, as part of giving the developer a reduction in fees and the, the 17-year term, maximum term, the city is receiving $350 per unit, which we can't typically ask for.
Okay. That answers that question. If we have nothing else, I'd close the public meeting.
Move staff recommendation.
I second.
All those ready to vote? Vote.
The motion passes four to nothing with two recusals and one absence.
Congratulations. Good luck. Thank you for doing that. Okay, so, we move on to community development managers announcements.
There's nothing more to add, just a reminder that the July meeting, we will have our Valley Fever presentation, and we will start the meeting at 4:00 PM. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for doing all the work to put that together. Appreciate it.
Sure, my pleasure.
Do we have any other thing, updates on the harassment one?
Yes, thank you. HR has set up, I believe I mentioned this at the last meeting, HR has set up a log-on and password for the commissioners to use for their sexual harassment and other trainings that you might want to do. It's my understanding that Ms. Reyes is going to email you the log-on and password in advance of the July meeting. It's a very straightforward website, but if you have questions, we will have a representative from HR here a little bit earlier than our agenda review? Is it agenda review?
That is agenda review.
Agenda review for July. So, if you have any questions about how to navigate the website or how to get on, she'll be here to answer any questions.
Okay. Any other commissioner comments?
Do we know how long that online course is, and is it pretty user-friendly, or is it one of those that's not cumulative? If you get out, you're out?
Uh, I, I have not gone on yet, but it's my understanding that it's very user-friendly, and it's not, um-
All or nothing?
Right. It's not like this drop-dead-dry test thing at the end. I, I, my understanding is it's much better than what we used to have. But again, if you have some concerns or questions, once you get in there, a Roxy can come and answer whatever.
Okay, it was just more along the lines when we've done our ethics training in the past. It, there is a, and I think this is probably more either federal or state mandated, there's a certain amount of time that you have to access the system. I, I didn't know if there were any certain mandates like that, if it's an hour, you have to be in, turn the page, oh, let me answer the question, that sort of thing.
Well, that's the Brown Act training, the 1234.
If you read quickly, you wind up having to go back.
Exactly. That is my point. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mercy.
It takes me all day to read that.
I, I sometimes think I'm good at reading Evelyn Wood style. I may not be, but I think that I am, and in the end, I suffer for it because I have to retake or start the course over online. So, I will slow down.
I don't know that this website has that feature built into it. I don't suspect so. They, they really signed on to this program because it is really user-friendly. So, if you find otherwise, let us know, and we'll, we'll figure something else out. Okay, thank you.
Well, now is the time we have public business from the floor on non-agendized items. Do we have any speakers?
There are no speakers on.
So, then, this meeting is adjourned to the special meeting for agenda review on Monday, July 9th, 2018, at 4:30 PM. Come early if you want the extra training. Thank you all very much.